Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Administration Committee for February 10th, 2021. We have one item on the agenda to consider Ordinance 2103, formerly Ordinance 2033, two amendments titled II of the Boone County Municipal Code entitled Administration and Personnel Regarding Chapter 2.02, Orders and Commissions Revised, and Chapter 2.04, Common Council Revised. This is an ordinance sponsored by me, so I will gently reintroduce it. It's been sent back, of course, to committee after some initial consideration. In particular, it was about, this makes a number of changes to Title II. Most of them are, you know, minor adjustments to code to reflect current practice. The most controversial issue was Section 6, if I can, if it will come back on screen. Sorry, it's Section 7, rather, which deleted fiscal impact statements in their entirety. We do have one amendment tonight, which is on an unrelated section. But I'm not sure what, if any, presentation my colleagues would like to hear from me. If you'd like me to discuss it, I can, or we can go directly into questions. Okay, Mr. Flaherty.
Given that we've already discussed this a few times, I don't think there's necessarily a need to have a presentation. I think we were trying to wrap up some discussion items last time and we ran out of time. So I'm happy to pick up the conversation where we left off. There's also one new amendment, I believe.
Right. Would we like to hear the amendment first, the new amendment? Let's go ahead and start with the new amendment. Councilmember Scambler, would you like to introduce it?
Yes, thank you. This would be Amendment 2 to Ordinance 2103, related in particular to Section 5 and the process of how...
With all due respect, I think it needs a second.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Flaherty?
Why move we introduce Amendment 1? Or no, it's not Amendment 1. What's the amendment number? I'm sorry.
Amendment 2.
I move we introduce Amendment 2.
Second. Go ahead, Councilmember Scambler, please go ahead. Yeah.
Yes, Amendment 2 to Ordinance 2103. This would essentially strike some language that my cosponsors and I think would actually streamline this process and our meetings to some extent. In Section 5, this would actually remove the language, "Motions for referral to a standing committee shall be entertained before a motion for referral to committee of the whole and shall include the approximate time at which the committee will convene." Thank you, Mr. Lucas. Since the adoption of standing committees in February 2020, legislation has been largely assigned at the discretion of the council president. And council has always had the opportunity to redirect legislation with a majority vote. Continuing that practice, that practice seems to work pretty well. Last year, continuing that practice would also eliminate the need for additional motions and so forth during council meetings. When we talked briefly about this last week, I think, if I remember correctly, Councilmember Bowlin, you mentioned that part of the reason for requiring referral to a committee before allowing it to be sent to committee of the whole was to encourage use of the standing committees. And my words, not yours, to kind of put a thumb on the scale, so to speak, in favor of using those committees. Just, my cosponsors and I kind of thought we're a year in. We've used these for a year now, and they don't need that extra help, so to speak. We can streamline the meeting. We can streamline and eliminate the need for additional motions if we simply allow the president to make a referral and allow the council to override it by majority vote if they so desire.
Does that conclude your...
It does.
Okay. Now entertain questions from my colleagues. Councilmember Flaherty, do you have any questions?
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Scambler, for the presentation. I think we had a meeting earlier this year where we sort of awkwardly entertained a vote or two about a referral to committee because I wasn't 100% clear on what we thought was the appropriate response to entertain a motion. After further discussion with our counsel attorney, I think we came to the conclusion that simply offering the opportunity to make a motion was sufficient. We certainly don't need to hold a vote on a committee referral, standing committee referral, first, which is what we had done the other evening. So, for instance, the council president could just, if no initial referral or preliminary referral had been made by the council president, he or she could say, you know, "Does any council member wish to make a motion to refer to a standing committee at this time? Give it five seconds. If there is none, then, you know, move on to entertaining a motion to refer to committee of the whole." Does that affect your thinking at all, Councilmember Scambler? And did that slightly awkward meeting affect your wanting to bring this amendment?
I'll answer those questions. Did that shape our thinking? Not particularly. But again, I think we have seen committees at work. We have seen what they can do. We have seen situations where they might not be as desirable. This preserves two things. First of all, the president's ability to simply refer legislation and keep it moving, and council's ability to send it somewhere else if a majority thinks that's important. And to eliminate the need for multiple motions. So, that speaks to your question. I guess, I feel like it doesn't, but I'm not...
I think it does. I was just kind of asking if, you mentioned administrative efficiency, essentially. And I guess, to me, the president saying, you know, "Would any council member like to make a motion to refer to standing committee?" And waiting a bit to hear if such a motion is made is an extra 15 seconds of the meeting, you know. So I don't think of that alone as being administratively burdensome. Whereas if we had to go through a vote each time, for instance, it might be more so. I don't think it's that big of a deal. I just thought I'd ask.
Thought it, because what would a meeting be without questions?
Since you're the maker of the amendment, I'll take a stab here. Your two cosponsors have been openly in opposition to standing committees since they were introduced. It hasn't been a year yet. This is the complaint that I had in December. The mayor signed the legislation on March 1st, so we didn't really use them until March 6th. So how should I not interpret this as simply their effort, and I'm leaving you out of this even though you're the lead sponsor, as their effort to do away with standing committees altogether?
I guess I put very simply, that's not what this ordinance does. It doesn't eliminate standing committees.
No, but it does favor, I mean...
There are vastly different opinions on committees, whether or not we should have had them, and how well they have served them in the last year. And I think how you've characterized Councilmember Sandberg and Councilmember Rallo's views on committees is fair. And I don't think that's any particular secret. Again, this particular motion doesn't eliminate standing committees. It allows the president to essentially do what you did as president, which is refer legislation. And I'm not sure why we would be averse to that. I mean, committees will earn their own way, too. They will prove themselves to be useful in some situations and perhaps prove themselves to be not useful in other situations. I don't think we need a thumb on the scale to route them that way.
Well, I mean, as president last year, in order to give them a fair shake from members who are vociferously opposed to them, you know, like I had reason to find this, I mean, this language wasn't even, this language happens to be in this ordinance, but it's an afterthought. There's another, you know, like, that's not why this language is included. It's not language that I added, it was already there. So, you know, the fact that I, I mean, I appreciate that you acknowledge that they have been bitterly opposed to the use of standing committees. But without this language, it seems that the president would be free to simply... I mean, I guess the other question is that because of the pandemic, we gave, and for the sake of scheduling, we gave the president the ability to make a sort of a preemptive referral to a committee so that scheduling could be done. I guess maybe I should ask you to speak to how this will affect, how scheduling will be done of standing committees if it's not clear that the council will refer to standing committee.
I'm not sure that much will change. I think we received packets on Friday. We have opportunities to reflect on the legislation that's in them for five days. And that has generally allowed ample time to do whatever scheduling we needed to do for a committee. I guess I'm not sure why we couldn't do what we did last year, I mean, with this change.
Well, I guess what I, so what I'm imagining is that the president decides that he shall send everything to standing committee, or to a committee of the whole, on Tuesday, you know, before the meeting, like he'll simply, what if, what would prevent the president from simply preferring that every time instead of, I mean, will it require an affirmative motion of a council member? Or, I mean, will the council have to vote down referral to committee of the whole in order to get it sent to a standing committee?
Well, just as we talked about, council always has that option. You ask, "What would stop a president from just referring everything to committee of the whole if he or she wanted to?" That opportunity to vote with. The opportunity for a council member to move that it instead be sent to land use or administration or wherever, and a majority vote on that. That's what would prevent...
Again, it matters which vote comes first. If the vote, it matters what vote comes first. If the president has decided that a committee of the whole vote will be taken first, then those who have always preferred it will choose committee of the whole. I mean, there was a reason for this language. It was so that, it was to, frankly, to force the council to try it. And it matters which motion comes first. So how does this not basically allow the president to forward everything to committee of the whole?
Theoretically, it does, although the council could change it, right? But again, it, as you've said, the point of this legislation, this language, was to force council to try it. All right, they've done that. And I appreciate that that language might have kind of put a thumb on the scale, so to speak, and pushed us toward the use of committees. You know, it's not necessary anymore. Committees are, no, they're not a year old yet, but they are old enough, and we have sent enough legislation to them to, for council members to have legitimate opinions on whether or not it's useful or not. We simply acknowledge that.
Thank you. Further questions, Mr. Flaherty?
I don't think I have more questions now, thank you.
All right, we'll go now to the public for comments on Amendment 2 to Ordinance 2103. So any member of the public who would like to comment, please use the raised hand function in Zoom or type into the Zoom chat. Mr. Lucas, are there any takers?
Not that I see, no.
Last call for public comment on Amendment 2. Seeing none, we'll come back to the committee for further questions or for final comment. Mr. Flaherty?
Sure, I'm ready for final comment if there are no more questions.
Please go ahead.
Sure, thanks. Appreciate the amendment, the presentation. I'm pretty ambivalent. I don't think this materially changes much. It is true, whether or not this section of code remains, that a simple majority in any case can choose where legislation's going, and that includes if and when the president makes a preliminary referral to any committee. That said, I think there's one more facet to this, which wasn't discussed in our questions just now, which is that the committee of the whole is a parliamentary tool that's not really traditionally meant to be used in the way we use it. And one of my sort of aversions to it is that I think it confuses members of the public a lot. BPF people show up to meetings of committee of the whole expecting the ability to comment on non-agenda items, for instance. I mean, we've even seen that frankly from the mayor or the administration. Sometimes, you know, Mayor Hamilton or someone will show up expecting to have a presentation for city staff at a committee of the whole meeting because it's just all nine of us. It's, I know until I was deep in attending many council meetings that I didn't understand the difference several years ago. So it's kind of an awkward tool. It's entirely fine that people like meeting as all nine members. You know, Councilmember Rallo and Sandberg, for instance, have spoken of their general appreciation of hearing from all of their colleagues on an issue, as it's heard. And I think that's a fine perspective to have. My preference personally would be that we simply, if an item is simple, we send it to second reading, skip committees, go first reading to second reading. And if something comes up that is controversial and unexpected, then just send it to a third reading. So I'd like to see us get away from the practice of committee of the whole. And it's not an aversion, it's not a slavish, you know, sort of desire to stick to standing committees for every, everything. I think there are times when we don't need them. But I don't think committee of the whole is the right tool. And that is enough of a reason for me to vote against the amendment because I just don't think, I think we need to get out of that practice personally. That said, again, I'm fairly ambivalent. I don't think this materially changes much. A majority of the council will always get to refer legislation to whichever committee or no committee at all, as they would like. So I'm going to vote no on the amendment, but my feelings are not all that strong. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scambler, would you like to go last, or would you like to go next?
Go ahead.
Because everyone can be rebutted. So I'm happy to take the initiative if you like, or, okay. It does matter what motions go first. In fact, there's rules and Roberts just to address competitive motions. Like how does the chair distinguish between two motions happening at the same time? You know, this code, that's the subject of this amendment that's being stricken, was meant to prevent competition of motions on this particular controversial process topic. I've heard the Councilmember Scambler's characterization of some of her colleagues that they have a legitimate opinion on this topic. That's true for every member of council. My opinion is legitimate as well. So, you know, like, I respect their legitimate opinion, but they have not respected the notion of a year. For them, it's very casual. A year is a year. It's not a year yet, we're in 11 months, but we had the same problem in December. The current president was eager to address the question of standing committees in December with an eye to make a decision on whether we should continue to use them the first meeting in January. It wasn't me who forced a two-month delay in the simple creation of standing committees, let alone their use. So, once again, I find the people who have been most adamantly in opposition to this idea, not only to be insincere in their desire, that a year means something totally subjective to them, but I would argue that they, and I don't include Councilmember Scambler in this, they have done no systemic thinking about how council does business. They're simply reacting to proposals for changes in the system that we use to deliberate on issues. And I am very disappointed and discouraged by their participation in this amendment. Councilmember Scambler, on the other hand, does do her thinking in her homework. To that end, I would suggest that, again, I think that this would incite competition in motions once again. The existence of this language continues to give priority. I mean, we can call it putting thumb on the scale, but that's putting the thumb on the emotional scale. Simply put, it does give standing committees, which have some very strong opposition, a chance to be tried. And if this had been brought in March, especially in considering that the administration's working on a Title II ordinance, if my colleagues had brought this as a separate ordinance in March, I would have had less objection to it. But it simply underscores the adamant but insufficiently contemplated opposition that some of our colleagues have to committees as a whole. And, you know, I mean, that's why I'm very disappointed to see the support from our colleagues here. But I also want to point out that in the height of the pandemic, as president, I readily referred several pieces of legislation to committee of the whole. But Councilmember Flaherty is correct that committee of the whole was meant to be an extraordinary circumstance, not ordinary usage, that referring to a third reading is something that we should be considering instead of the committee of the whole. And someday, I hope, I can persuade my colleagues that their devotion to committee of the whole is insufficiently thought out, but they've never really thought about it. And so far, in this year-long experiment, they seem to not have tried to think about it. I'm really disappointed in that. But as far as Councilmember Scambler goes, you know, I understand why she proposed this. I would suggest that the, what's the word? Not the preference, but the predominant motion should stay as it is because it prevents competition for it, that there will be more time spent in competition. I can tell you that I, for one, will vote against any committee of the whole referral whenever it's, unless it's extraordinary, like it was during the pandemic last year. And that I'm afraid that it won't save time in council. So for those reasons, I am inclined to oppose it. But I'm interested to hear my colleague's opinion. Thank you.
You mean this colleague?
Yes, colleague, Councilmember Scambler, please go ahead.
I understand, and separately and collectively, we have had countless conversations about committees. And it's striking to me, too, how polarizing they have been. And I understand that. And I understand, too, Councilmember Bowlin, how much work and thought. No, I probably don't understand, but I accept that you have done a great deal of thought, invested a great deal of thought and research in this project, and I understand that. It doesn't seem to me to be particularly productive in the context of a meeting like this to try and debate whether or not council members Rallo and Sandberg have sufficiently contemplated something, or how sincere they are in their willingness to try something. That feels like very unproductive ground to travel. So I will just acknowledge those comments of yours and leave them to the side for now. Councilmember Flaherty, I'm struck by what you said about confusing the public. When nine people are in a room, it sure looks like city council, and it sure looks like a regular session. I agree that it is confusing. And it took me a couple of years of watching council meetings to actually get the nuance of the difference between that. I acknowledge that that is confusing. I think it is no more confusing than many committees have been for. Is it the Public Safety Committee of City Council? Or is it the Board of Public Safety? Who actually is meeting tonight, and what does that mean? To someone who doesn't dive in, who doesn't know our faces and doesn't know our names, I think that's a point of confusion, too. You know, what is the exact role of the Sustainable Development Committee? Isn't that like a climate thing? No, we have a climate committee. So in terms, I agree wholeheartedly that we need clear communication and consistent communication. And I think we will still be confusing to people for whom city government is not top of mind. I guess I don't see committee of the whole, I see committee of the whole, if anything, as being less confusing to the public than committees have been. So again, we may just differ on that, but I would just offer that thought. What I keep coming back to personally, and I'm speaking for myself and not my colleagues, Councilmember Sandberg and Rallo, is the notion of forcing council to use committee. I'm not sure what could happen in the next four weeks that would make such a difference or offer such an epiphany as to how we think about committees. But committees have been in place, certainly the better part of the year, and they've seen legislation before. And they've been used for subjects that were not the topic of legislation. So the notion that we haven't tried committees enough, the notion, it's almost as if we're suggesting council members are not entitled to offer an assessment of committees at this point. And I would respectfully disagree with that. I think there are some council members who have been opposed from the beginning. And one of the things I've heard talked about from the very beginning with Roberts rules and with committees is protecting the minority viewpoint in all of this. Well, the minority viewpoint opposed committees last year. But they tried them, you know. So I think we can continue to use them, but I don't think we need the thumb on the scale anymore. If we do, then that would suggest to me that they're not the helpful tool we think they are. So this simply, again, this amendment simply allows the president, just as was done last year, to make, to traffic up this legislation. Committees can still form and meet and hear things that are not the subject of legislation, like Public Safety did last year, and I think Climate did last year. And it always, always allows council to vote differently and to vote to redirect something away from committee of the whole to a particular committee. That hasn't changed at all. So those are my thoughts that I would share. I would welcome more thoughts or more questions, but I would share that.
Thank you. Any rebuttal? No. Seeing no second comments, I guess our business here is done. We'll, I'll entertain a motion on the amendment 2.
Move, do pass.
Second.
Amendment 2. Councilmember Flaherty?
No.
Councilmember Scambler?
Yes.
And I vote no. So the recommendation is 1 to 2 against, but the amendment will come to the full council when it comes back to the full council. Okay, back now to the ordinance as a whole. I think that one of the reasons that it was sent back to us was the question of fiscal impact statements. So I wonder if we should be discussing it now. I also would like to encourage the staff of the council and the clerk's office, if they have any opinions on this matter, to offer them. But the, Mr. Lucas, do you have something to offer?
No, just wanted to pop up in case there were questions, specific questions for us, but also happy to answer any other questions you have on the ordinance as a whole.
Okay. Councilmember Scambler?
Just point of clarification on this process. We've recommended the passage of Amendment 1, not recommended the approval of Amendment 2. So if we were to move do pass on the ordinance, what are we moving on? Do we still need separate, do we still treat the other do pass? Do we still need separate, do we still treat the other do pass votes on amendments as separate? Or does that question make sense?
Mr. Lucas, I think, do you want to answer this, or would you like me to?
The committee's recommendation would be a recommendation to the full council that the council pass the ordinance with the amendments recommended by the committee. So at this point, it's just Amendment 1 that's been recommended. Typically, what we would do, though, is forward both, both amendments to the council with the committee's recommendation attached, so that they can see the committee considered the amendment, took a vote on it, and that the vote was what it was, so.
But the amendments do get heard by the full council?
I'm sorry, what?
The amendments do get heard by the full council regardless of their effect in committee.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
So this came back to committee over the question of fiscal impact statements. And I remember one of the questions I had was that, I mean, I'm actually struggling to remember now the, the substance of the debate we had over it. So I'm not really sure, like, I mean, I'm not sure there's anybody here to argue for, I mean, I'm not sure what we were hoping to get done. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yeah, point of information, actually. I believe we already voted on the amendment regarding fiscal impact statements. So I don't recall offhand either why we went to a third committee meeting. I think there were some questions remaining on something perhaps other than fiscal impact statements and/or we just didn't have a time to, didn't have time to consider a do pass recommendation on the, the ordinance as a whole. I don't think I had additional questions personally, but I recall at the end of our discussion, as the meeting came to a close, that there seemed to be some, and for that reason, we decided to go to another committee meeting. That's just my recollection. The point of information was meant to request if council staff or others had a, had a better memory about, about what exactly it was.
Councilmember Scamblerie?
That's it. We were actually, we had met at 5:30. We were bumping up against the committee. The whole meeting was 6:30, and so we had to continue our session to the last for that. Passed one amendment, hadn't discussed the second one that we did tonight, but we were still discussing the entire ordinance as a whole, so.
Yeah, I recall that. Well, I'm looking at my notes from that time, and I see notes on Amendment 1 that I took for myself, but not the ordinance as a whole. But with the absence of anybody else to address the issues, sort of at a loss as to how to proceed. I mean, I do think that the, you know, I mean, I have contemplated the idea of bringing yet another amendment that would instead require more detail, like be more specific in what fiscal impact statement would, would say. But I mean, I can't vocalize it here. I mean, I have thought of going the other way rather than eliminating them completely. I will say that that particular section was almost an afterthought, but it turned out to be the reason why we are still talking about this two months later. So, you know, I'm of course reserving my right to bring that forward, but it's not so serious that I want to delay the proceedings here. Does the, what is the opinion of the committee as to whether or not to, to hold another meeting on this topic? Councilmember Flaherty?
No, I'm not inclined to do so.
I think, I feel the same way.
Actually, I'm kind of attached to the meeting.
All right. Mr. Flaherty, sorry.
That's okay. I just, I think if we would have had five to 10 more, well, maybe a little more than that. I forget if this Amendment Number 2 was actually drafted and ready at our last committee meeting, and if so, okay, yeah, anyway.
It's dated today, so I.
Okay, that's right, that's right. So I think we were 10 minutes away probably from a referral back to the council with the do pass recommendation on the ordinance as a whole. Last time we met, we just kind of ran out of time. So I, like I said, I don't have additional questions. I think we've already discussed and considered the fiscal impact question. We voted on a do pass recommendation for an amendment, and I'm sure we'll discuss it at second reading as well, so.
Well, I think we have to at least dispose of this by having final comment and a vote on a recommendation.
And I would say probably public comment as well on the.
That's right.
So.
If there are no other questions from my colleagues, I'll go to the public for comment on ordinance 2103 as a whole. If there's anyone who would like to comment on the ordinance, please raise, use the raise hand function in Zoom or type into the Zoom chat. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Second call. Final call for public comment on ordinance 2103. Seeing no public comment, we'll come back to the committee for debate. Is there any final comment on ordinance 2103? Councilmember Scamblerie?
I wish to wholeheartedly and enthusiastically endorse Councilmember Flaherty's viewpoint on the opportunity to send this back to council. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yeah, I just appreciate the work that's gone into this with, by council staff and Councilmember Lowen in the months leading up to its introduction. The discussions have been interesting and productive. It's the kind of thing we, I don't think we, the council has been in the habit of doing over the last number of years, and something we should get in the habit of doing is revisiting our administrative procedures and thinking about, are they serving us well? Are there gaps? Is, you know, a need not being met, or could we clarify things? It's the kind of, the type of thing that an admin committee could give, you know, kind of annual consideration, like a Title II look, just like we do with Title 15, for instance, coming out of the Planning and Transportation Department or other things like that. I'm hopeful we do the same thing with Title 20, frankly, that that's not a unified development ordinance sat on the shelf for 15 or 20 years. I think these are all things that merit revisiting, so I'm glad we're doing that. I'm glad that there's a Title II ordinance coming from the administration, and I think that will prove interesting as well. And as you all know, we're also in the process of a sort of comprehensive review of boards and commissions through the NOVAC Consulting Group, which has done a number of organizational assessments for the city, and I think that will probably lead to Title II changes as well. So, yeah, just a general comment that I'm glad we're considering these things. I appreciate the work and look forward to passing some of the updates that we've been able to outline in this ordinance. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Scamblerie?
I have no further comment. Thank you.
Okay. I will say simply that this has been a lot of work, more work than it should have been for an ordinance that was largely cleanup. I do think that the amendment to, I mean, to continue having some kind of fiscal impact statement is, I mean, I have had to change my opinion. I still disagree with the continued existence of a fiscal impact statement in the old form that it was. The change that is recommended by councilmembers Piedmont Smith and Scamblerie is frankly insufficient, that if we're going to have it, we should, it should be more robust. And so that's why I'm thinking about possibly introducing an amendment that would go the other way, because I had said consistently about it that I'm not opposed to the idea in principle. I was opposed to its implementation. And simply making it vaguer and easier to, to throw in, I don't think serves the public. So, you know, if, if we're not going to, if the committee is not going to keep this for one more hearing than I have until next week to put something together, I'm not sure I'm going to do it. That's why I'm as ambivalent on this as I have been about anything. But in general, most of the changes here are or were supposed to be uncontroversial. And I don't think it's, it's inappropriate to say that not enough of our colleagues have done, have put it, put time into thinking systemically about how council runs, about the state of our code. I think that they're simply reacting because legislation has come forward. I think the only reason, well, a big reason that this Second Amendment came tonight was because the text was there in the ordinance as a matter of course. But I doubt that some of my colleagues have actually delved into Title II. I'm very much looking forward to seeing what kinds of changes the administration wants to make to Title II. There is a lot of cleanup to be done. Mayor Hamilton said in 2017 that he thought that a review of Title II was appropriate. I agree with him. It was, it has been. So I hope that that's the spirit in which we'll take up this and other Title II changes as they come forward, but like, none of it is a substitute for all of our colleagues knowing the rules. I mean, even I'm discovering things that I didn't know existed, and I thought I'd seen it all in many years on council. So, you know, it's incumbent upon all of us to become more familiar with the rules that we use to do business. I think that if more of us were familiar with more of them, we would be having fewer debates, and we'd be making more changes with my new votes. With that, I will entertain a motion.
Move, do pass on the ordinance. Sorry.
Ordinance 2103?
Ordinance 2103. Thank you. I didn't have it pulled up.
Need a second. You're muted.
Would that be ordinance 2103 as amended?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to add that to your motion?
Yeah, I guess.
I'm not sure it matters because the amendments don't, we don't have direct effect over the amendment.
Sure. I would like to move do pass of ordinance 2103 with accompanying do pass recommendations on amendments.
Second.
We have a motion in a second.
We just can't, we can't truly consider it amended, I don't think. It's, there's recommendations on amendments.
Right.
It's, yeah, anyway.
Another thing we have to work on for future rules. We'll now call the road. Councilmember Scamblerie?
No.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So the recommendation of the committee is two to one. It goes back to the full council for consideration on the 17th, I believe. I think with that, our business is done. Thank everyone for coming, and we'll see you next week. This meeting is adjourned.